To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you're watching at home, you obviously see Commissioner Trost is not here, but we do have him on the phone. Jay, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Volume's a little low, but we can hear you. I don't know if there's a way to turn that volume up at all Natasha, but if you can, that would be helpful. So first on our agenda is amendment and approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda. And unamended, right? We don't...
Wait.
I don't have an amendment.
Jay, you don't have any amendment changes, do you?
I do not.
All right, then I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
And yes. Motion passes three to zero. Next up is general public comments. I have one comment from Joe Wilson.
Natasha, is that microphone on?
I think she turned it on, yeah.
Checking.
Yeah, it's on.
Thank you for giving me this time this afternoon. I came here to be constructive, not destructive. I want to participate and do it in a very constructive way, but doing that, I may say some things or ruffle some feathers, but listen to me till the end. I've heard you discuss why the levy fell, but, and you know, because it was too much or whatever. The biggest reason the levy fell was that people are opposed to taxes. And it isn't because they're opposed to law enforcement. There are people that do want to defund the police in this county. And if you don't believe me, I have a video of them protesting right in front of the courthouse four years ago. One of those particular people is currently an elected official in the county, not here. I know, I honestly, truly believe, nobody here wants to defund the police. No one. But because of what happened with the budget, you're forced into it. Now Jay mentioned, the last time I was at a workshop, about law enforcement being about seventy-three percent of the general fund. And of course, when you're seventy-three percent, you gotta make cuts. It's gonna take a big part of that cut. But, you know, how much is today, after the cuts, how much is the percentage of the budget that is law enforcement in the general fund? I don't know that. So, you know, we had, you had to do what you had to do. We can't really change that, but we need to look to the future. Now I heard a rumor that we possibly may have a workshop where we deal with a separate entity for the sheriff and also funding. I have some ideas on funding that doesn't involve raising taxes. And also have an immediate way we can raise some funds. It's not a lot of money, but to me, every penny that we raise in this county right now could mean going to another deputy for the rural areas. And right now, I think the rural areas are suffering because they do not have sufficient law enforcement. I don't think anybody here argues with that. And we need to do everything we can. So, I need to talk to somebody in the code department. It affects the sheriff's department for this one way. We could immediately raise some funds. And I could do that at the workshop later today. You just let me know. The biggest thing I wanted to talk about, this infighting I see going on, it really concerns me. I don't think we need to do it. I think it's, we have a breakdown of communication. And I think that everything's a two-way street. We need all, we have one goal. Everybody here wants what's best for the county. I know that. I believe that. How do we do it? And we got some strong-willed people here. And they believe what they believe. And people knock heads. Heck, I'm guilty of that a little bit. I think you know that, John.
We all are, Joe.
Well, and I'm gonna put Ted on the spot over here. I mean, there was, I think the biggest, I like putting Ted on the spot.
Yeah.
I'd see Ted, he reminds me of me when I was younger. A lot of people might say that that's not a compliment. But, but Ted, the other day, you and John got into a little bit about who's working for who. And you were correct. You work, the county council, you take your orders from them. But they take their orders from the people in this county. And the people in the county have voted for John to be the sheriff with a large majority. Personally, I feel we are blessed that John Ward is our sheriff. One of the reasons I moved to this county was because John Ward is the sheriff. So I really want to advocate that we all take a step back and, and think about the respect everybody deserves. You deserve respect, the commissioners, John. And in everything we say, temper it before we say it. I mean, I'm gonna put, I told Pat earlier, I was gonna put him on the spot. I think it's exciting that we have a young man like Pat becoming a county commissioner. He's already made a major contribution with the natural resources possibility. I think it's huge. It may save this county. It may save more than just this county, what Pat has done. But I was mentioning the Pat earlier, he's a young man. And he admits, he has a lot to learn. And the biggest thing, the biggest failure in all the businesses I've ever been involved with is communication. And people say things sometimes and they get misinterpreted. It takes a big man to admit they're wrong, but we all make mistakes. And I really feel like when Pat mentioned about John and it was inferred that he may not be transparent, I don't think Pat meant that the way it came across. I really don't. I think that's been misunderstood. And I hope that that can be cleared up. If nothing else, between you and John. So, let me see. I even wrote myself some notes. I usually don't do that. So, I think one thing, this budget thing, it's really taught us, not only that we don't have any money, but, but the fact that a lot of people didn't realize. And that is that the sheriff is a servant to the county commissioners. Because county commissioners control the money. And that's a fact. That's why we need an independent sheriff. Because right now, if you look at what the sheriff's department owns, I don't think they own a pot to piss in. Everything's owned and controlled by the county. And the money controls everything. And I think that's a hard thing to deal with. Hasn't, you know, things have been run differently in the county, and I think we're paying the price for that. Because it, you know, Robin Peter to pay Paul, ending up broke. We don't want that. Nobody here wants that. And so, this workshop that's coming up, I think is critical. Because there are ways, and solving problems, it's a process. You can't get everything done at once. One other thing that I'd like to find out about is how much does it cost to put one more deputy on the road for a year? What is the cost of that? Just something to be discussed at that workshop. Let me see if I got anything else. So I think that's the, I've covered most everything I wanted to cover. I didn't mean, I'm coming here because I want the help. And I think that we're going, we're wasting time fighting with each other. We need to start working on solutions. And I know today may not be the day that we start that. Hopefully at this future workshop, we can. And so I want to be a part of that. Anything I've said that anybody disagrees with?
Ted, I don't like pushing a guy like you around, so.
You had a question about the percentage of the current sheriff's budget?
Yeah.
Kena says that is currently, total general fund resources are six point nine one nine seven nine eight million. And sheriff's office is requiring three point four three two three one four. So that's fifty percent, basically.
Okay, so we went from seventy down to fifty. Just, it's a fact. We have to all understand what has happened. And then, the goal is, and there are ways, I think the fund of sheriff's department and have the people support it. And I think the majority of the people want an independent sheriff, answerable to the people. And the reason is this, we won't have this county commission all the time. Who knows what will be in the future? There may be some of these defund the police, really bad people that get on the county council with an agenda. That's why we gotta separate the sheriff. So he and the people can vote him in or out on the job he does. Thank you. Thank you, Ted. If there's any questions, feel free.
Well, thank you, Joe. And I always appreciate your comments. I would, I would definitely welcome you to talk with me afterwards today, because I am working on a, exploring every option available to us outside of what we've already explored. So I've got a couple things that I'm looking at. So maybe some of the ideas you have might compare to some of the ideas. So if you would like to talk later, I'd love to talk to you.
I will be available.
And, and I agree with everything you said, Joe. There is definitely, there is, there's a thing about leadership, you know, and I'll say that you have to be willing to accept the cost of leadership. And when you do that, you oftentimes have to make hard decisions that have a negative effect on people you care about. And, and that is a reality of, of leadership. And when I have to make decisions like that, I can tell you that I never take them personal. I never, I never look at it, I never, I never look at a situation like that where that person's my enemy. Certainly not. And my mission, my goal has always been to fund the sheriff's office independently from the general fund. So, like you said, it won't be an issue with future leadership. And I've got eight hundred and eighty-four days left to do that. And I, and I can-
But who's counting, right?
And I continue to remain loyal to that mission, for sure.
I just want to clarify, you agree with everything he even said about me? Is that true? Well-
He didn't say anything bad about you. He said you two are alike.
Well, Ted.
They fit, right?
So, yes. And the workshop is Wednesday, Rivia, is that correct?
Yeah.
So what time? Wednesday at two o'clock. And I look forward to that. I know the sheriff's been working on, on some options. And I don't know what those are. I haven't been involved in that process, but I, I definitely look forward to it. So again, thank you, Joe. And let's, let's talk afterwards. That's okay. All right. So next up is discussion. And this is the sheriff. So, sale of equipment, K-9 vehicle to Joe County.
Morning, afternoon.
Afternoon.
So, reason I'm here is because in the past, some of the things that were done were different than what they are being handled right now. I remember selling a vehicle to Brookings Police Department for the chief down there. And I signed off the title. We did a bill of sale. We also did that once before Port Oxford PD. So, what I was doing was just trying to streamline the process and sell a vehicle that was requested by the Josephine County Sheriff's Office for a K-9 vehicle. We have three outfitted completely that we're not gonna be able to use. And I asked John from the road department to give me a book, Kelly Booblook, on the vehicles. And the one that they were interested in was booked out at sixteen thousand seventy-five dollars. And the sheriff was, was willing to pay sixteen grand for that vehicle. So, they have a K-9 officer, didn't have a K-9, but they needed a K-9 vehicle. So, I started the process and then I had a conversation with Ted and told me, this is the way that should be done. So that's what I'm here for today, was to ask for the authorization to sell that one vehicle to Josephine County.
So, we have three K-9 cars right now, right?
Actually, four.
Okay. Which, where does this car fall into? Is this Tim's old car, or?
It's his old car. Well, it was actually Virgil's old car. It's been used several times. And Tim was using it the last, because there were some radio problems, he switched out into it.
Okay, so we have, we have Zane's vehicle, right? Which, so that's a, I'll say a primary vehicle, because our working dog's in it right now.
Right.
Out of the other vehicles, where does this vehicle fit into? Is it, would that be the, the best one? The second best? The least?
Well, if you go by mileage, it has like ninety-three thousand miles on it. The next one was, had a hundred and three thousand, hundred and four thousand miles on it, something like that. But records-wise, I believe it's probably comparable, just all three of them. So, there was two vehicles that are in two thousand nineteen model, and one was a two thousand seventeen model.
Okay. And what do we end up doing with Tim's dog?
Josephine County has that dog, because I had it for about a week and a half. And I couldn't handle the dog. I had three big dogs of my own. Didn't have nobody else that was interested in the dog. And they needed a dog. So, they were, they're fostering that dog at this point, and training, and keeping the dog in law enforcement.
Okay.
The dog was given to us through donations from Dick Wilson.
Yep.
Right.
And I went and had a chat, a conversation with Dick Wilson. He told me to do what I felt necessary for that dog to stay in law enforcement.
And the K-9, this, the specialized cage in the car, in the K-9 car, that's also donated money, right?
That was donated by Dick Wilson.
Okay. So is Joe County gonna work that dog?
Yes.
Okay.
They're actually, I reached out to the people who we bought that dog from, Tim and, or Tony and, I can't remember the gal's name, but they were gonna try to find it a home, which they had somebody in Colorado that was interested. I thought that was a little bit too far away, but you know, then that guy backed out. So I put it out on listserv. Anybody who could foster a dog for us, because we don't have the resources to do that. Dave Daniel from Josephine County reached out immediately and says, we'll take the dog. So, and I kept the dog for a week out there. And it was obvious, he almost killed my cat. Wanted to fight other dogs. And he's a very loving dog, but-
To people, or to you?
Yeah, to, well, to people. I mean, they fell in love with a dog.
Yeah, he's social, I think. I haven't been around this dog. And for anybody watching, this dog came after my involvement with, with the K-9 program. So I'm not, not as, I don't have the knowledge about this dog that I do with the other dogs. But my understanding was he was pretty social. But he is a, he is a working dog.
He needed a lot of work. He was, they call a dirty dog, because he didn't have enough training. And that's what they're working on right now.
Okay. All right. Jay, comments?
I don't have any comments. I think it would be, maybe prudent to wait until we have our workshop later this week to discuss kind of what the outcomes are looking at. Hate to give up a vehicle that we would turn around and need for levy or funding solution were to pass.
So I guess that brings up a good, that brings up a good question. So, you're still focused on a public safety district, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I, I guess we'll hear, and it's not this Wednesday, it's next Wednesday? So next Wednesday. What's the date on that?
Six, seven, yeah.
The seventh, okay.
Seven. Wednesday after next.
Is it this Wednesday?
No.
The seventh. So-
I thought it was July thirty-first. That's what Jay had sent me an email saying we're having a workshop July thirty-first.
Yeah, I thought-
It was my understanding that we were, that we were gonna be doing it on this Wednesday. Because that's why Jay, Jay reached out to, you know, to the sheriff as early as possible, because it was time-sensitive, so.
And to Jay's comment, we'll never have another four, four dogs. And we have four vehicles that are equipped for a S-K-9. Getting rid of one of them is just prudent to me is, is the best way to do that. And Josephine County's been helping us, helping me with district information. And he's willing to come over and help anything we need him to do. So, if we can help them, and it doesn't hurt us at all, I'd say we need to sell them the car.
So, the rule, the rule is surplus property may be disposed of by any of the following methods upon a written determination by the board of commissioners that the method of disposal is in the best interest of the county. And to governments without competition by transfer or sale to another county department or public agency is one of those options. Auction, bids, liquidation, sale. You would have to determine what's in the best interest of the county.
Was there, sheriff, was there any interest in, from any of the local agencies? BPD, Gold Beach, for, for the dog or the car? Because that would keep the assets available to, to us through mutual aid.
There was no, nobody reached out to me like that.
I've had interest from Brookings PD regarding potential interest in K-9 units.
In the, in the dog or the cars?
In the, in the, in the, in the-
Vehicles?
Car.
In the car.
I didn't, I didn't know the dog was an issue. I didn't know the dog was at, was being even discussed. Because the dog also is county property. The dog can't be disposed of. It's, it's a county asset. And in, depending on the, on the, on the training and so forth, that dog could be, you know, fairly valuable. So, it's a thing that, that, that needs to, that also needs to be worked through the commission. So, right now, he's being fostered. That's a different thing.
What was the conversation with, about the cars?
I got a call from, or I got a text from Lieutenant Dotson down in, in Brookings. And they're interested in, in looking at any K-9 vehicles that we maybe wanted to liquidate.
That's not what he told me. Lieutenant Dotson wanted to know if we would sell him the cage out of one of the car. And I said, I didn't wanna tear the car apart to do that. I offered him the, the same thing, basically. And this has been a couple months ago. You know, why don't you just buy one of the cars? We'll sell it to you, you know, with what we can. And he never got back to me, so.
I got that. Hang on.
I'm asking you, as the sheriff, this is my opinion, this is the best route to go to sell the car to Josephine County.
I got that at eleven-thirty this morning.
So I guess my other question would be, how did the, so, if it's a special district that you're working on, how would the, how would the vehicles work into that plan?
If we were able to get one more dog, then we would still have a vehicle for the dog and a spare. So, I don't see us ever going to any more dogs than that.
Well, you'd actually have three spare, because you say you have four, and you're gonna get, no, two spare. So you-
If I, we sell one-
You have four right now. We get rid of one, there's three. So you have two spares, if we do get a-
If we get one to, to Josephine County, that leaves-
Three.
Well, I mean, if you wanna look at it that way, but-
Well, we definitely need to have one spare K-9 car. If we're gonna, if we're gonna have a dog, we need to have a spare K-9 car. Because that, that creates all kinds of problems. If you don't, when the primary K-9 car goes down, it impacts the safety of the dog, safety of the community, the availability of the animal. There's issues related to, you know, then you got a deputy trying to stick a, a dog in a car, and he's gotta compromise some equipment, and it causes all kinds of problems. So, having the spare K-9 vehicle is extremely important. I, I do think Jay has a good point about if, especially if the meeting is Wednesday, that's just a couple days. And I'm just, my only concern is how the vehicle would play into the funding for a special district, what those numbers look like, and then how the cost of the vehicle would be.
Well, we're not gonna be going after a huge amount of money for the district, because people don't wanna pay for that. We're gonna try to cut it down to where we're gonna have enough people, but not what we had.
Right. But the point I'm trying to make is, so if you go out for a special district, then you're not, you're, the district wouldn't, special district wouldn't, and I might be wrong on this, but wouldn't allow you to have access to general fund money, because the special-
We're still general fund obligated, you know, especially in the jail and so, and search and rescue and so forth.
Well, I guess that's part of my questions to be asked on Wednesday. Maybe I'm unclear about, maybe I'm wrong about that. But then the question would be, so vehicles, vehicles would be, the cost of vehicles would be included in the special district costs that we would be passing on to the taxpayers potentially. So-
We have eighteen cars out there right now.
Right. And then, so what are the-
They're county assets. See, Joe's, Joe's point earlier was, I think what Joe was saying was that it's, it's important for, down the road, that the sheriff's department be independent from the county. So, by saying that you'd be general fund obligated, that would be defeating the purpose. So we need to, we need to, we need to, you decide what we're doing. Because I, I agree with Joe. I, I agree that it's in the best interest of, of law enforcement in general, that, because we can't, we can't predict who's gonna be here. But we can, we can predict that Curry County will, will elect a responsible sheriff. We can predict that. So that's where we need to go. But, but if you're gonna say, if you're gonna say general fund obligated, then that's not what we're talking about.
Well, I'm just clarifying what he said about general fund. The special district will hopefully encompass all the sheriff's office. But, right now, we are a general fund obligation.
Right. Right. But we're just talking, as we go forward, because, because you know, right now, right now, the reason, the reason the county has oversight over the sheriff's department is because the county owns all of the assets that the sheriff's department uses. So, we need to figure out a way to transfer those assets out of the control of the county. And that's gonna cost money. But, you need to, you know, if people understand, you know, it's possible to communicate that, what the goal is there. But it's, but, but we all need to be clear that that's what's, that's what's happening. And it's, and it's, you know, it's in the best interest of both the county and the sheriff's department to do that. Because then, as, look, I've never been through the budget process that we just went through. But trying to explain the Byzantine nature of how putting, taking money out of road funds to fund patrol actually impacts like the assessors' office, that's, we shouldn't have to try to explain that, because that's, it's a problem. It's not the way that things should work. So separating them, I think is a great idea. But we just have to be committed to doing it.
So why don't, why don't we do this? If we don't have the meeting, the workshop scheduled for this Wednesday, I'd like to have it this Wednesday, because I'd like to know what's going on with the update on the, the potential funding. And then, let's schedule a meeting about this immediately following that, so we can make that decision, so the sheriff doesn't have to wait. Immediately following.
Immediately. There's nothing posted, Rivia, on, in the website. Okay, yeah. I mean, it does.
You're saying that they don't have to wait. I mean, it's not me just waiting, it's Josephine County's waiting as well. They were here that day to pick up the vehicle, because we were gonna do it the way we've always done it, until, you know, I was said, we need to do it this other way. I said, okay, we'll do it the other way. That's why I submitted it. And I, we got it on a special meeting-
Right.
-to get it done.
This is the first I heard about. I didn't know that they were here or came here. I didn't even know about what was going on with the dog. So, so I think I would be able to make a more informed decision after we hear from you on what the plan is gonna be moving forward with the funding solution.
You know, it's pretty simple right now. I've been in touch with the state elections and said that we don't really have a lot of time to put something on the ballot for this November. In order to do that, I have to contact a local elections person and see where the, what the timelines and the things are for. Well, she's on vacation until- Well, she's on vacation until the fifth, I believe. And that's not gonna give time to get it in front of you guys and have it on the ballot by fifteenth of August.
Do we have somebody in the clerk's office that can answer questions or prepare that other than Shelley, Ted?
I've been there to ask in question. What I need to ask is Shelley.
Or can we get Shelley on the phone to answer those questions?
I can try to get Shelley on the phone, but otherwise, if we can, we can also, I mean, if it comes down to it, we can't get the answers out of our own clerk's office, let's go to another clerk. Let's, let's get those answers.
This is important.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get those. I, 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 I agree with the sheriff. We gotta get the answers. We gotta meet the time.
Even if we don't get it on the ballot in November, we'll still be able to work on it now and get it to where the closest we can get it to on the ballot in the future.
So sheriff, it has to be drawn up and approved by us by the fifteenth of August?
No, it has to be by, I would believe the seventh, because you still have to have public notices and people.
Yeah, I think we talked about the eighth, but the seventh, I think, is the date of the meeting, so we wanna have that, that would be the hard line.
And then have to be, and approved and submitted to the budget, I mean, to the elections to get it on the ballot. But they would have to have several weeks to have it in front of the public to make, see the public would support it. That's what I was.
Basically, we're out of time right now.
Basically, we're out of time.
Jay, your comments?
I'm having a really hard time tracking right now. I can barely hear. I, I think I'm catching some of the gist of it, but I don't know if I can add much value, because I can barely understand what's happening.
Okay, the synopsis is, and this is just a recommendation that I came up with, is we don't vote on this today. We have the workshop on Wednesday, so we can get additional information and make the best decision. And then we schedule a meeting immediately following the workshop to vote on this issue, so that it doesn't wait until our next meeting.
Joe, I'm, I, I agree with that a hundred percent.
And Jay, you'll be here Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, he's in Salem right now, I think. Any other comments?
So I'm not getting the approval today to sell the, the car, I take it.
We'll do it Wednesday, after we hear.
Well, possibly.
We'll make a decision Wednesday.
That's all I got.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any other discussion, then it is four thirty, or two thirty-three, and we'll adjourn the meeting.